You are watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
If you have your patience, we'll call to order a meeting of the Swansea zoning board for January 2,024. I'll ask Beverly to call the role and read our agenda.
Swansea zoning board of adjustment meeting agenda for January 8, 2,024, 7:00 PM is as follows. There will be a call to order, followed by discussion and review of minutes for December 11, 2,023, followed by public hearings, ZBA number 23-017, an appeal of the planning board's decision regarding the use determined in the site plan review application submitted by Fieldstone Land Consultants on behalf of All Purpose Storage Swansea West LLC for property located at 115 Basil Road. The subject property is shown at Tax Map 2,003 Lot 20, and, excuse me, Tax Map 2,03 Lot 20, and is located in both the business district and rural agricultural district. There may be other businesses as arises.
Thank you.
Eric Calio? Wayne Leffleider?
Here.
Edelmann Karin?
Here.
Jay Ward?
Here.
Lisa Thorne?
Here.
Ann Karasinski?
Here.
Brian Rikers?
Keith Tebow?
Here.
You have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. First order of business is a minutes from December 11 meeting. At that channel, yes.
I have a quick addition to the minutes?
Yes.
Well, just noticing, I think it was a discrepancy. In under public hearing, that paragraph, the last sentence, Ward was seated by Thorne. I don't think that was what it meant. I think it was meant to say Ward was seated by Tebow. In that, I don't believe she was there at the meeting.
So the change is...
The change says, it says Ward was seated by Thorne. I don't know where she was, who seated her. I wasn't attending. It just...
Seated by Tebow, four of them.
Seated by four of them, okay. Yes, she did not have a present.
Thank you.
Maybe just four versus five would be sufficient, so.
I will change it. I'll make a call.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
I've read through the others, Mr. Chairman, and I'd make a motion after that change that we accept the minutes of December 11, 2,023.
Okay. At that meeting, it appears as though in addition to Ann was Brian, myself, and Jay. So we'll need a second from...
A second.
Thank you. It's been moved to second to accept the minutes of December 11, 2,023 as presented. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right. So we have a public hearing tonight, ZBA number 23-017, an appeal of the planning board's decision regarding the use determined in the site plan review application submitted by Fieldstone Land Consultants on behalf of All Purpose Storage West LLC, property located at 115 Basil Road. Subject property shown on Tax Map 2,03 Lot 20, and is located in both the business district and rural ag district. Seated for this will be myself, Brian, Ann, and Lisa, and we'll seat Jay Ward as the fifth member. So considering that, we are here to consider the planning board application as being complete, and that the use being quote "services" unquote in the business district, we'll open up the public hearing and we'll hear from the person who's... Yes. Thank you. Identify yourself for a minute, ticker.
Yes, my name is Joe Hoppick, and I'm an attorney in Keene. I represent Ms. Howard right here, sitting to my left. Now, I just briefly refer to the minutes of the planning board, after I put my glasses on, as to what the issue is, as I understand it. From the minutes of September 14 of 2,023, the planning board determined that the use in question, the proposed use in question with respect to this application from all purpose is a services use under the ordinance, and therefore is permitted. We disagree. The relevant minutes suggest that the chair said if the board agrees that this application is for services, then the application is appropriate. That this business would be for multi-tenants, and therefore they will need to go to the planning board for each tenant. This chair said the building is set in the plans that are approved and be enforced by code enforcement. The chair asked if all agreed that this application is for business services. He also noted that approaching into another district can occur by 30 feet. We take no issue with that. All agree that this application is about services. There was no debate. There was no discussion. One person, Victoria Ames, asked why this wasn't in the industrial park considered for this project. And Mr. Brandon said this was light industrial. We think it's commercial, and I'll explain why. Now, the proposal calls for two 36,000 square foot structures within which there will be 40 individual bays or units. Now, these units will be 30 by 60 feet in diameter, in dimension. You have to ask yourself, what's going to go on inside a 30 by 60-foot unit? Well, they tell us more in their application because five employees are expected to be employed per unit. So who will the tenants be? The tenants will be contractors, people in the trades, people who are electricians, plumbers, heating, air conditioning, service providers. And these people will be there renting these 30 by 60-foot units. What will they do there? They will keep their employees there, and they will keep materials there and store them. They will warehouse their materials that they will use for jobs. They will also dispatch people from that site, from Basil Road, to jobs within the area. So if you're a contractor, if you're an electrician or a plumber, let's say, and you have a lot of materials and supplies that you may need for a job that's two or three miles away, it's more convenient and efficient for you to store your materials at this place. And that's what this business model calls for. They will put those materials in those units, store them, keep five employees or so per unit so that they can take dispatch orders and supply labor to job sites in the area. So these people will be there on call, ready to go to a job. They'll be there ready to dispatch parts to a job. And they will be there to service the contractor's work at another site. There'll be no customers coming to this site to buy parts or contractor services from these people. They are there simply to facilitate and support the tenant who's renting the space. Now, there is not going to be any sale of physical materials from these sites. They'll store materials needed for jobs. As I said, they'll fabricate materials. Mr. Brandon from Fieldstone mentioned that, and that's in the minutes. They're going to do light fabrication there. So if a plumber needs a specialized fitting or a pipe that needs to be molded, if you will, for a certain hard-to-reach space, they will mold that part there within that 30 by 60-foot structure or unit. They will do fabrication of parts there, send them from that unit to the job site so they can be used at the job site. That's not really services to the public of any kind. The applicant is not proposing to have customers come to this site for contracting purposes, for retail, if you will, services. As I mentioned, nobody's going to buy parts there or materials. Nobody's going to come in and say, hey, I have a job that I want you to quote. They're not going to have offices there. They're going to have 30 by 60-foot units used for storing materials, not servicing customers. And as I mentioned, the applicant will be shipping these goods, storing them, and then transporting them from storage to a job site when needed. And the same will be true with the workers, the five people who are there. These people are going to be full-time employees, no doubt. They're going to be, you know, they're not going to be just paid to sit around at that unit. What are they going to do? They're going to be there doing the inventory and dispatching the materials and supplies and their own labor when needed. Now, there's been an issue about whether or not this board has jurisdiction over this appeal. I just want to speak briefly to that. You have in the minutes of the planning board, they made an interpretation of zoning ordinance. They called it a services use. And I've tried to explain to you in my written materials and tonight why we think it's not a services use, why we think it's a commercial use. That is clearly an appeal of an administrative decision that's properly before you. And the other thing I want to add, this is not a question of administrative gloss. This is an issue for your board to determine, to try to define, what actually is the use here? Is it services? Is it something else? And I submit to you it's something else for the reasons I've explained. And that's properly before you, and that's not an issue of administrative gloss because it doesn't even come close to services, in our view. What we have here is activity at this site, at this Basil Road property site, that is occurring at 40 units, 30 by 60 in size, leased to commercial tenants involved in the construction trades. And the activity that's going to go on at this site will go to support the business activity of the tenants. That's it. And that's, we think, what the nutshell is here. And we ask you to define this as a commercial use that requires surveillance. And I thank you for your time and your patience. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant care to rebut or give his side of the story? Just state your name for us.
Good evening, board members. My name is Chris Swiniarski. I'm an attorney from Divine Millimet, representing All Purpose Storage Swansea West LLC. So as we know, my client applied for planning board approvals for contractor bays. And I don't necessarily disagree with Attorney Hoppick's characterization of what these bays are for. I also don't think the board needs an explanation of what contractor bays are. These are bays where tradesmen who provide services to the community basically have their headquarters. They keep their vehicles, their equipment, et cetera. Now, that application was in the business district where the use of services allowed. We're only here just talking about what does services mean in the zoning ordinance. In this town, the town has consistently interpreted this very use, contractor base, to be services, and it's done so in various different zones. That very much implicates the legal maxim of administrative gloss. The town can't consistently apply one interpretation and then one day say, no, it's different now. The only way the town can do that is with a zoning amendment. And furthermore, the interpretation was a pretty reasonable one. I mean, these are actually services that are being provided. So really, the planning board in making that interpretation, or the planning department, we're not exactly sure where the determination actually happened, but that's a logical one, and it follows the precedent that the town has followed. It's a reasonable one as well. There's no legal basis to overturn that and grant the appeal sought because it was reasonable, it was logical, and you have administrative gloss now where that has been consistently applied, such that it has become the law. If you have any questions about the materials I provided, or if you haven't seen some of the examples of that consistent application, I did provide, I think, six of them in the papers that I submitted, but we could talk about any of those if necessary. Otherwise, that's all I have for you.
Questions from board members?
So you're the attorney for the applicant. They're not represented here to answer any questions about the facility?
The engineer is not here tonight. He couldn't be here, and I didn't think we had actual questions about the facility. But if you do have questions, I can try to answer them.
Oh, no.
They're pretty detailed in the plans.
Oh, I've seen them in the plans, and I've seen them in the original application. I've just... That was in the application. The applicant, the person who filled it out, they're the ones that, when they filled out the section, question six, proposed permitted use per zoning services in parentheses, to be rented out to various service businesses, plumbing, HVAC, landscaping, electrical, et cetera. So that was the example the applicant used in their submission to the planning board.
Correct.
I just wanted to understand that. And for myself, because there's been a number of, we've met, we haven't met many times now, like three or four, I think. The original application said five employees with 40 units. I believe it's fewer now.
I don't know that anyone can be... Are you talking about fewer?
Units.
Units? I don't know the final unit count now.
Okay. I'll just have to look again.
To be honest, I don't know how that unit count impacts.
The number of anticipated employees was the same. About 200, right?
I don't know that you can actually estimate
Yeah.
the number of employees.
Okay.
You know, you may have one contractor, whatever business that contractor may be engaged in, whether it's HVAC or plumbing.
Yeah.
It's hard to say how many employees.
Might only need one.
It might be one.
Yeah.
It is hard to tell. I don't think the nature of the case here has to do with the number of employees, really. But I would say, though, when it comes down to numbers and impacts, the use that we anticipate at this property is a far less intense use than what the appellant proposes is the permitted use of sort of a retail type of situation where people are coming to the property for a service. Certainly, that's going to be more intense than what we anticipate the use to be, which is your conventional type of contractor base that I think people are fairly familiar with.
All right.
So people will not be coming to the site as customers?
I think occasionally people can, but generally, no. These are contractor bays where, again, contractors store their equipment, their inventory, and these are generally contractors that are providing services to other places by the nature of the trade.
So let's just expand a little bit about what goes on at the site. We have bays which are picking up the old vehicles. There might be a vehicle inside as well as outside. There's additional space beside the bays. Is that like office, or is that, will there be internet there? Will there be people taking orders through line orders or whatever?
Frequently, all of those things happen in contractor bays. We don't have a tenant list or any of these leased out yet, so we don't have the actual tenants yet. And that's why I think the planning board mentioned, and it's a valid point, that there could conceivably be certain uses that if proposed, would have to come back to the planning board.
Or perhaps the zoning board.
Or perhaps the zoning board. Right, absolutely, absolutely. It really depends. But the intended use, again, are these standard contractor bays, which are, just as you described, there would be vehicles. You know, if it was a plumber, for example, fittings, all kinds of equipment. And yes, you may assemble certain things. I can give you an example of, in an HVAC situation, if you're getting a new boiler installed, there is a little bit of assembly that takes place first, and that would frequently happen there rather than at a customer's house. Is that light manufacturing? I don't know that I would call it light manufacturing, but I mean, you get the gist of what is going on here. These are service trades, and they do some prep work at these contractor bays as any service trade would.
So I have a couple of questions for each of you, but I'll ask individually if that's acceptable to you. So we're really here to define whether the planning board, to sustain or not sustain the planning board's perceived use. Okay. So we're in agreement on that. And now we're really just going to define, in our case here, about services. Do you agree with that?
Yes, but I think you have to go along with what the town has consistently applied.
Oh, no, I understand that. I just want to make sure that the base is...
Yeah, the base is set here as... If what we applied for is services or not, yes.
And would you agree with that as well, counsel?
Rather speaking, I would, yes.
Okay.
I can speak to that more when I get my turn back, but yes, generally, yes.
Okay. And from what I'm hearing you say, there is a possibility that there may be what we determine as individuals in the community as traditional retail services, where I'm going to a window front, and I'm exchanging money for parts or money for services. And what you're saying, what I think I heard you say, is there is a potential for that to happen here.
There's a potential for that to happen, yeah. As I said, there aren't tenants yet. So, you know, the design is what it is. In creating that design, we anticipate certain types of tenants. But obviously, any tenant that may want to rent this space, they can rent the space if they have a use that requires further relief from this board. They can come to that board to seek that relief if needed. So there is, yeah, there's really infinite, well, let's not say infinite potential. That might be a little bit excessive. But yeah, there's potential for all kinds of tenants to be there.
And so is it safe to say, as well from based on the testimony, that there's not any office space, as we would consider traditional office space in here? These are essentially what we would deem mini-storage buildings?
No, actually, there typically will be office space in there and internet and things like that. I think, as I mentioned, when you had raised that, it is going to be as you described. So frequently, when you have these contractor bays, there will be small office area in there. And there will be, of course, internet and things like that in the office. It's not fair to characterize it as an office building or an office, you know, as the whole space is an office space. But yeah, these frequently have office space in them. Very frequently.
Other questions, Brian?
Quick for now, thanks.
Okay.
Can you elaborate on some of the other approved uses of things like this in the town?
Sure. The examples that I submitted to the record were... I have to be honest, I don't know a lot about them, but I talked to the planning department and the engineer about them. But the examples I had were, so March 25, 2,021, an application by Furlone LLC; May 13, 2,021, application by Tenny Electric; December 9, 2,021, application by Pappas Construction; June 22, 23, Glass Repair Shops and Tri-State Restoration Company.
So are you able to characterize what goes on at those businesses?
Well, yeah, these are similar businesses. So for example, Tenny Electric, an electric contractor. Pappas Construction, a construction contractor. The last one in there is a landscape contractor, Four Seasons. So that's consistent with the characterizations that we've been discussing.
Would you know where the nearest one of these happens to be to us tonight? Something like this, because I'm pretty well aware of the various communities we have here. And I don't know of anyone that is in a truly, that goes to the level of being a contractor bay. Do you know of any in the county?
Marangers?
I personally don't, but I would bet somebody here does. I'm not from the town, whereas almost everybody else here is. So I think if you were to put that question out to the public, I think you could get some answers. I'm probably unfortunately the worst person to answer that question.
Okay. Thank you.
James, is what you meant that these businesses are, and maybe these businesses are independent businesses, not residing within a contractor bay? So that's not the same business model that you have?
No.
They're similar in the sense that they're services. That's how you're...
Exactly. It's my understanding that these have all been recently approved as services.
Okay.
And that's what we're talking about, is whether or not, because that's the issue at hand here, whether the service is being carried out onsite or offsite. It's not necessarily that this is, and I'm sorry, I shouldn't have characterized it that way. Not that it's a contractor bay, but rather that these things, these businesses are considered services. You don't necessarily come to those sites to get your service, but they are still service businesses, and they were allowed without any additional relief from this board for... If it wasn't services, it would have required some sort of additional relief. Yeah, I'm sorry, and thank you for helping with that clarification.
Just trying to see how similar they really are. And yeah, there's multiple things on this site versus something there. And that the other sites are more set up, perhaps, to have customers come to the site than this site is because there's not a whole bunch parking here, other than what the employees are using.
Yeah, and it's not intended to have people coming. But I think with these businesses, and I don't think the question really becomes how many are on any particular site. That wasn't really the question raised. The question raised is, you know, whether or not service means it's happening onsite or offsite. And I don't think any of those examples would suggest that it's an onsite service. I mean, take landscaping, for example. If you need landscaping services at your house, it's not at the landscaper's location.
Could you expand a little bit on light fabrication? What does that mean?
Yeah, I don't know that light fabrication is a great way to characterize. I wouldn't say it as such. But one of the examples I gave was so frequently with HVAC, I just happen to know this from having a boiler replaced recently. So this whole boiler mechanism comes in several pieces, and there's some assembly required before it is actually installed in a customer's home. And that's the type of thing. So it's really assembly. It may be, and also similar to what Attorney Hoppick had mentioned. So if a plumber has, say, a certain job that requires a certain type of pipe fitting and several connections that have to be put together, it would frequently be easier to make those connections on a bench, on a tool bench, rather than under somebody's countertop or in a wall or a crawl space. So that pre-work is done, or preparatory work is done before the service is done onsite at a customer's home.
So in order to do that, you're talking about having welding?
I don't...
Welding, soldering? So where I'm going with this?
Soldering's very rare these days.
Talking about oxygen tanks, acetylene tanks?
None of the above, but if those...
The gases will be stored on the premises?
So if those are regulated, then those would have to be regulated by the fire department. None of the examples that I've contemplated use those types of things.
The HVAC guys don't weld?
No. Soldering is actually very different than welding. That's just propane or MAP gas. Those are things you buy at Home Depot or Lowe's. However, that's not really used all that often. And again, those are the type of things that it's not a bulk storage situation. Those people are using the bottle that's this big that you buy for your own home use as well. And again, these are the types of things, if a particular use was proposing something like that, a particular tenant that fell under some other regulations and needed some additional relief, then yeah, they would need that additional relief. But we don't have those exact uses yet because we don't have the tenant list yet. I mean, what our proposal is, is for these contractor service bays.
In your written documents that you sent to us, you characterize some of those uses, the light fabrication and the storage of materials, as the kind of accessory uses which are permitted in our ordinance. Do you want to speak to that a little bit, since we haven't given you a chance to do that yet?
Yeah. I don't think it's, I don't think it's appropriate or accurate to characterize the storage of your business supplies as warehousing. I think just about every business has some sort of supplies. I think the example you use, you know, I work at a law firm. We have lots of paper, stacked up reams of paper. We're not a paper warehouse. We're a law firm. Same thing, if you're a plumber, you may have some fittings that you generally use, and you're going to keep a supply of those on hand. use, and you're going to keep a supply of those on hand. That's accessory to your primary use of providing a plumbing service. It's, you're not a warehouse at that point, and I, I don't think that's a rational conclusion at all, I think that's a warehouse. Virtually every business has some sort of storage requirement. I'm sure there are things stored here in this building to keep the operation of this building going. That's ancillary stuff, and that's what we're talking about, is the storage ancillary to the businesses and the service uses that will be in these units.
Thank you.
A little problem with the, with the, with the comparison, this building having what it needs to have to, to run, as opposed to a carpenter who needs a plethora of things to be able to build a house. So I don't, you know, there's, the potential to having a, of having a varied amount of materials on that site is pretty high. I would imagine if the contractor base is wide open, if you said, "We're gonna focus on electricians," you know, it'd be a little bit easier to define, but I don't think that comparison of this building having what it needs to run is comparison to what's gonna be happening here, because you're gonna try to be, a plumber's gonna try to have everything there they need to be able to respond to a customer, as opposed to, "We need toilet paper and some light bulbs."
Right, but the, the reason I make the comparison is, is because it's, it's accessory to whatever the use is. So the, the things you have in this building are for the use of this building, and the things a plumber may have are for the use of his business, because he's running his business, or her business, out of that particular unit. When you, when you say warehousing, warehousing usually will mean that you are stockpiling inventory, that you are distributing or selling out to other people who are then going to sell it again. And that resale is sort of the big difference between warehousing and accessory storage of your, your own inventory for your service business.
Any other questions to the board at this point? Not that we're shutting down the board, but we're gonna open it up to the public. Everybody okay at this point? Okay, we'll have more time. So, this is a public hearing, we will ask members of the public if you choose to speak. Come to the mic, identify yourself for Barbara here, so she can know who you are, and, and let us know if there's anyone, anyone here that is looking to speak. Please.
I'm Deborah Sprague, at 42 Base Hill. I've been there almost 50 years. The road is dangerous, as is right now. The bridge that they're gonna have to constantly go over is not well, and we cannot find out when it was last checked, but people in the neighborhood know that the understructure of that is getting dangerous. Just Arlington paving vehicles going up and down are a concern. When they were talking earlier, they said they would probably have to have a box truck, and they did not indicate five employees. They did indicate two dug wells, they indicated two septic systems. It's gonna have heat and lights and bathrooms and all kinds of stuff, which is gonna be very tempting to a guy or a woman that's working there that doesn't have a place to live. Thirty by sixty is a big piece, and you want forty of them? I don't see it happening and not interrupting with the wetland that's there. I mean, if people have been in town, Bardwell's Cows used to be down there, but other than that, there wasn't, there hasn't been anything on that property since I lived there. So, the road is so narrow, even if you come in from the Keene side, it's very narrow. And again, the first time we heard about all of this, he was talking about tractor trailers coming in and unloading supplies. So that sounds like a whole lot more than some plumbing supplies. I don't get it. We have an industrial park area, this is not industrial park business. I mean, I mean, it is, it's just, we've already got the storage units, and they're gonna be using the same driveway that this company is going to use. It's within feet of neighborhood backyards. It, it's just not a place for this, it really isn't. And I hope you'll take that into consideration. I was hoping that the man that went and did the conservation was here, because we were told that the wetlands may very well be involved. And we have all kinds of wild animals there, and I'm just glad I'm not one of the three neighbors that it's gonna be in my backyard, but you still gotta, you gotta hear us, you know, the road is just not capable of this kind. When the marketplace opened, all the Massachusetts people come over to go to the marketplace, and now you've got all the Vermont people coming over to go to Market Basket. It's just, it's a narrow road, and I, it's just not for this. I'm sorry, it's just not.
Thank you very much.
Ma'am?
I just wanted to make a, I, ma'am, ma'am, I, I appreciate what you said, and I appreciate what you said, I understand, you know, the, the words and so forth, but from a board's perspective, we have a very, very narrow focus of what we're able to determine, what would influence a decision one way or the other.
Several years ago, I had to come to the zoning board to be able to put a porch on the back of my house.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know?
Our scope is just this big, and that's, I just want to make sure that that's understood as we go through this, you know, it's really what it comes down to, is the definition of services, and that's the role of what our board is here to determine. We're all Swansea residents, we all live here, we have to deal with the same rules that everybody else has to deal with. If I'm gonna put a porch on that was not in compliance with the particular, I would have to be in the same seat. And so, but our focus, you know, fortunately and unfortunately, I think I look at it, is very, very narrow. So, really, it's just a definition, at this point, of services.
Well, it used to be a really nice neighborhood, and it's just, it's not a neighborhood anymore because they keep bringing in more stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to add to that, I want to make sure that you believe that you have been heard by the board. It's way out, way out of our jurisdiction.
I know.
But the town administrator is there, he heard what you said, and he'll have to go through the motions, but as a resident of Swansea?
Well, I was concerned when you said you were going to be meeting based on the planning board. So are we supposed to assume that the planning board has already approved this? And they're just waiting for your final word?
No, they have not. So let me just give them a little explanation there, Mr. Chairman, you, yeah. So, I learned this tonight, I didn't know it as well, but apparently with the planning board, it's a two-step process. The first step is to meet with them and discuss about everything that you have to submit to make a complete application. That's all that's been done so far. It has not been met to be voted yes or no, or anything. They're only putting the package together, yes, they have a package, and then it was appealed to come to us for the definition of services, because our zoning ordinance and the language in the application don't match, okay? But as far as everything else, it has to go back to the planning board regardless. The water table, that's state, that's not the zoning board. Planning board, I have to cross that bridge, literally.
Well, this gentleman's backyard is gonna be from here to that wall. That's how close they're gonna have to come in to avoid the wetland, but he said very clearly that there would be tractor trailers coming in on both sides of these buildings.
Ma'am, I just want to add, I've, I've been to the site twice, two-site visits, and I am very sympathetic to what you have to say, but that's not the issue that we have to decide tonight. I mean, I, I feel for you in a lot of ways.
Thank you.
And to be clear, what we're deciding tonight still has to go back to the planning board.
Right.
There is no planning board permits issued here, there's no zoning issues, permits issued here, it has to go back to the planning.
Good afternoon. Eric Tarrant, 131 Base Hill Road. So... Tarrant, T-A-R-R-A-N-T. The impact is gonna be, like, within thirty to twenty yards of my back door, and I understand what you were just saying to her. My biggest thing is listening to this fellow here, where he says it's going to be a service, and that's what they're saying, which is fine, but he doesn't know who's gonna be in there, so he talks about, you know, being a warehouse. Well, when does it, is it a service? And when does it not become a warehouse? Well, we don't know. That's the unknown, right? That's, I just want you to hear exactly what he was saying. He doesn't know if it's gonna be a warehouse. He's saying it's a service, but it could potentially come back to you, or the planning board, to, maybe somebody wants to have a warehouse there. But that's all I think we're really concerned about, so that's not what we want. That's really all I have to say. But, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Would you like to have a report? Someone's raising their hand, I'm in.
Hello, my name is Nancy Sporbor, and I, I'm a Queens, I'm a Queens, I'm based on Base Hill Road, and I just want to make one, one point. I understand you cannot speak.
You can speak.
We'll need her name.
Can you just say your name again?
Nancy Sporbor.
Nancy Sporbor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Nancy Sporbor.
She's a key resident.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sporbor. S-P-O-R-B-O-R.
The point I want to make is that I understand that the, the businesses that will rent the base are service businesses. However, the overall organization that has, is renting space to forty different service organizations is a commercial business. Just because the business serves, provides space and services, doesn't mean it's a service organization. It's a commercial organization serving forty different service businesses.
Yeah.
No.
No.
So what do you want, microphone, you're...
I believe what she said, and correct me if I'm wrong, ma'am, you said that this is really a commercial enterprise which is serving service businesses?
Yes.
Except...
Correct. Just because the service businesses are renting space, doesn't mean that it's a whole business. Service is not commercial.
Renting to service businesses.
There.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here, or on Zoom?
Turn it on.
Oh, go ahead.
I would yield to anybody else in the public before I move on. So if there's anybody else, I can wait a second.
Yeah, just wait a second.
Unless there's anybody else, I'll take the opportunity.
Please do.
So, just briefly, on these other businesses. I heard Furlone LLC, Tenny Electric, Pappas, and maybe Tri-State, I think there are three or four businesses I heard. Furlone, according to its website, is a power generation operation in Swansea. Every one of these businesses has a, has a significant retail component. Tenny Electric does, Pappas Construction does, Tri-State Restoration, which is, I guess, a glass repair, uh, business, does the same thing. Now, we heard, my colleague over here talk about, although, you know, they don't really know if a customer will come in to these construction bays. Very unlikely, very unlikely. They're not gonna be advertising for retail services or sales there. They're gonna be supporting, as Ms. Sporbor mentioned, they're gonna be supporting the, the business contracting tenants' business operations at other, at other sites, job sites. That's what they're really gonna be doing, and that's gonna create activity. Now, I, I want to point out something that I respectfully disagree. Ms. Sprague mentioned about the tractor trailers, and you guys were telling her, you know, "We hear you, we hear you," but I don't think you heard her. Tractor trailers would be indicative of a commercial use. That's what that information that she told you means. So, I, I think that's a piece of information that you can use to show that it is relevant, and that these use, this proposed use is not a services use. Now, it's true, I, I'm on the Keene ZBM, in fact, I'm the chair of that board right now, and I'm in my last year, but neither here nor there, but what we evaluate a case, we look at what is proposed. We're not, we're not fortune tellers, we don't have a crystal ball in front of us, and I don't know, counsel here is right, they're, they're estimating five employees per unit. Well, that, you have to take that as their good faith representation, and assume five people per unit will be employed at each of these forty units. That's two hundred people. Now, we, we don't know, maybe we're wrong, maybe it'll be six, maybe it'll be ten, maybe it'll be two, but right now, you have a proposed use that says five people there. What are those five people gonna do? They're gonna support the tenant's business, and they're gonna do that by inventorying parts, shipping those parts to job sites, and, and supporting that business activity. All these businesses that, that the applicant relies on, to say that administrative loss applies are different. They are, they don't have construction bays, they are mostly retail and commercial operations, and, I might add, they're all located close to a major highway, like Route 10. Tenny Electric's on South Winchester Street, Pappas is on Route 32, Tri-State is on Route 10, and I really couldn't find where Furlone was located, but my client tells me they're located near a major, one of the major roadways through town. This particular application is on Base Hill Road, which is largely, although it's a zone business, is largely a residential neighborhood, as you heard from some of the people who live there. Now, and you can't see it from Route 10 going south or north, as you can with these other businesses. So there's a significant distinction between what they're, what the applicant's trying to say supports their application under the, under the heading of administrative loss. We just don't agree with that. They're not similar comparisons. What we think you should do, this is a commercial use, as Ms. Sporbor mentioned, and as I mentioned earlier, what this applicant needs is a variance for that kind of use of this property, based on the information in the application, which is what you have to go on, because that's all you have, it's a proposed use. It's not a defined use yet, it's a proposed one. So you take what's proposed, and you plug in the rules and the ordinance, and you make a decision. Is this use permitted in this zone? The answer is no. And that's all I have. I thank you very much for your consideration.
So, there was some talk about tractor trailers and things like that. What's permitted in this zone, the quote from the ordinance, retail sales, comma, service? Is retail sales not commercial? Does that not involve tractor trailers? I mean, that, this is a business zone, so we, we have people saying that these are services, but it's a commercial business because it's renting to those services, and that makes it not okay? That, that's just fine. That, I mean, this is a business zone, what we're proposing is a building that will be rented out to service providers. So I, I'm not, I'm not really understanding how these arguments make this use impermissible under the ordinance. They do not. That is the use that is permitted under your ordinance. You know, saying that it's com-
Um, you know, saying that it's commercial doesn't make it impermissible. This is a business district. Retail sales and service are commercial uses. So that's an important distinction to make because I, I, I think everyone getting hung up on the fact that since, since this is commercial, it's a problem. It's, it's not. This is a business district. This is a commercial district. So I did want that clarification to be on the record. There was a, a gentleman who pointed out that we don't know exactly who the tenants are. And, and yes, that's true. And, and like I said, there, there could be a proposed use that requires further relief, as I said before. That, that is entirely possible. I mean, we're proposing a building with an intended use. Um, and this happens frequently. Buildings are built for one thing and then someone might say, I want to use this building for something else. And that something else may require some sort of relief from the ZBA or possibly some sort of other relief even from the planning board. Um, we, we don't have a crystal ball. Sometimes there are proposals that come before the planning board and the ZBA that say, yes, we want to build this building and it's for Starbucks or it's for this gas station. And, and they know. Frequently, that's not the case. You don't know who the tenants are going to be. Frequently, you may have a proposal that says we're going to develop this retail building, but you don't know who the retailers are. Um, and, and there may be some retailers that require additional permission. That, that is entirely possible. And so we're not saying that by upholding the planning board and the town's decision, that you're green lighting this all the way for whoever may come in as a tenant in the future. That's not what happens here. This is simply, um, an affirmation or really a rejection of an appeal of the way the town and the planning board has proceeded. And it is in fact proceeding consistently with the way it has in the past. You know, it, it's further evidence of that. You have a staff memo from your planner, Mr. Peel, uh, August 10th, uh, sorry, October 10th, um, that is saying this is how we've always interpreted these uses. Any, any references, the definitions from the planning dictionary. So we, we have all the elements of an administrative gloss case here. That's, that's what this is. Um, it's textbook. You, you have it from your own planner. So I want to make sure these things are clear in the record because I think what we're hearing is not exactly what the, the actual reflect, record reflects. However, a lot of paperwork here. Not everybody remembers everything that you have here. So on that particular issue, you may want to refer back to the staff memo of October 10th, um, where Mr. Peel did say, this is how we typically interpret these uses. That's all I have to clarify the record. Thank you. I have just a question for you. The edges of who could use this, to me, I mean, I said the edges, the, the potential users is fuzzy. And you, who wouldn't you have in here? What is the camp, I mean, you have a sense of who might be coming in. Where might you as an, not you, but the owner, you'd think draw a line, saying that probably, it's not, yeah, this wouldn't be anything we would consider here. You have that sense of, of, of the type of, you know? Well, that, that, that's difficult to answer. I know, I know. However, what I can tell you, someone suggested potentially residential? No way, no way. We're not going to allow it in illegal use. In the end, we own and, and operate this property. So we're not going to allow illegal uses there, uses that require additional, um, additional permits. You know, if someone came to us as a tenant and, and every one of, and every one of the leases, there's a permitted use. Um, and, and no one is allowed any use contractually under the lease that violates law. If, if there's a use that perhaps we thought was okay and the town came and said, nope, this is not okay, you, you need, um, a special exception or a variance. We're, we're, we're going to agree with the town and we're going to have the tenant go forward and seek that relief. We're, you know, we're not going to stick our neck out or the property's neck out for the benefit of the debate of whether any particular tenant may be allowed or not. But to answer your question, I mean, what wouldn't we allow, um, you, you understand by the nature of it, it's very hard. Uh, we wouldn't allow a baseball team, you know, I, I don't know. There's a million things we wouldn't allow. What we envision are these, again, typical contractor bays. I, I don't, I don't know what else I could give you for examples of what wouldn't allow, other than again to respond to some of the, you know, maybe conjecture or suspicion that people would be living there. That won't be allowed for sure. It does happen though. In these businesses, if it does happen. I understand, you know, I, I, um, I, I actually have clients who do portable self-storage with the boxes and, uh, people have been found living in those too. People are crazy and they do crazy things. Um, and, and we're, we're not going to support that. We're not going to allow it. Um, if it happened and we found out about it, it would be a problem. And if the town were enforcing a get, you know, if someone breaks the law, someone breaks the law. We're not going to tell people they can do that. Obviously. Do you contemplate onsite management, someone there during normal business hours? Uh, I don't believe these facilities have any onsite management, no. Other questions?
Yes, just clarification.
Just give us your name, just your name for the.
Victoria Ames Planning Board. What is administrative gloss? I've never done that.
Sure. Uh, so it's, it's a legal maxim. And most basically administrative gloss means if that an ordinance is subject to one or more interpretations, if it has an ambiguity and the town has consistently chosen one interpretation, that then becomes the law. Um, unless the town makes a zoning amendment. And if you think about it, it's kind of fair because people come to depend on how the town has consistently treated something. That is what happened in this case. I know that Mr. Brandon, the engineer, has been here before and, and that is the interpretation that he understood, but that is what.
That's what it means. Administrative gloss means the historical interpretation of the ordinance?
Yes, when they're, when the ordinance is subject to some ambiguity or different interpretation, yes. Just, just ask your name.
Jan Goke. Um, I don't know who this question's for. If he.
Just, just, so we get your name. We didn't quite get your name.
Jan Goke. Jan Goke.
Goke.
Thank you.
Um, if he rent, you rent something, one of these storage units to someone, how does the town find out who's renting it and what kind of stuff they have in it?
You want me to answer that?
Yes.
My job, planning board.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, my job, the planning board. What happened, this is a multi-tenant building, what they're doing. They have, when they sign up, say they sign up pennies to come in there. They have to take that tenant, has to come down and have an application before the planning board and we look at it. And then we make a decision on whether that tenant can go in there or not based on zoning, uh, site regulations.
Thank you.
I have a question. I'm on, I'm on Zoom. This is Kathy Lampier. I live over on Basil Road, the Farmstead Commons. And, um, a couple things. I'd like to know who we would go to with our complaint about the traffic on Basil Road, the safety of that traffic on Basil Road, and who's going to keep up that road if in fact this is completely approved?
So this is Brian. So Basil Road, unless I've been correct, and I'll look to my town administrator to correct me, but that's a state-owned highway.
No, not with the town.
Oh, so then that would be the town public works department. Oh, then that would be for Swansea side, be the town public works department.
Um, what about the Keen side?
Well, same, Keen Public Works.
That would be Keen Public Works.
Yeah.
So, and they don't, obviously Keen wouldn't have any say in what's going on here. Am I correct?
No.
The, the Keen, Keen was allowed to come to the planning board to talk, but because this was deemed to be of regional impact. So, so Keen did have a chance to speak to the planning board and probably could in the future, speak to the planning board about the site plan.
Uh, who's from, who's from Keen?
I don't remember who it was who came. I was at the meeting, but I don't remember who came.
You know what department it was?
Community Resources, next to that.
What's that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Jesse Rounds, just from here.
That's who it was. Jesse Rounds from Community Resources. Did you hear that?
Yes, I did. Thank you very much.
City of Keen.
There's one whole hall that's Keen and two that are Swansea, that they're, they're neighbors. They're all the blockers.
And my second question is, I'm assuming that this development of that property is not infringing on residential area or the wetlands. Is that correct?
This isn't, this is in the business district. And when it comes down to wetland impact, again, that's not for the zoning board. That's for the planning board. When it goes back there, the applicant will still have to submit his full application, will still have to go through planning, planning board review, which will include, uh, water impact.
Okay, so then, um, any of us that have, um, a problem with this to go to that meeting that's next week? I was, I think it's next week, isn't it? Next Monday?
It's this Thursday.
This, yes, this Thursday and this Thursday.
It's this Thursday?
Oh, it's not on.
Six o'clock.
Next week.
This week?
No, it's this week.
The election's supposed to be.
But they're not on the DACA.
They're not on the agenda right now.
So it'll be, so, so it'll be planning board next week.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks planning, okay. And is it the same login that we have now or is it different?
Same, right?
Login information.
I have no idea.
Yes.
It would be the same.
Same login. It's going to be a different login.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Could you spell your last name?
Shewell. It's M A, M as in Nancy, P as in Peter, H E A R.
Thank you. Thank you. And it would be the same login.
It would. Okay, great. Thank you very much, everybody.
One order.
Yes.
Are these Swansea residents speaking?
No, not all.
They're not Swansea residents speaking?
I have no idea.
I believe one was.
But they're blockers. They are on blockers.
They are on blockers? Okay, okay. Anybody that speaks, they own, if they own law, they get a title other than they live here. Okay, just kind of read.
All right, we are still in public hearing. Any other questions from the board? Any other comments from folks that are gathered here? Or anyone on Zoom who's listening?
Speak, I'm on Zoom.
Yes.
My name, Don, D O N, Sporbor.
Don.
As Nancy, S P O R B O R.
Thank you.
Um, I think we can assume that there will be a number of tractor trailers, a number of vans and cars, of course, for the employees. But the vans, the tractor trailers, that feels commercial to me. And just as an example, in, in one of the bays, um, uh, if, if that organization is to deliver a boiler and they need to do pre-assembling in the bay, that feels commercial. Once the van is loaded and they deliver that boiler to a resident, that feels like a service. So the operation within the building, within the bay, to me is commercial. They're not providing a service directly to a resident. Only when it's loaded under the van and delivered to the resident does it become a service. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Board members? Anything else from? Anyone here? Please?
I'm not sure I have a last word, but administrative loss, this is, um, the businesses cited by the applicant are distinguishable from the application before you in that they don't have construction bays there. They're retail operations, those are commercial operations. And they're all major highways. So I don't think, I, I agree with council's definition of what administrative loss means. I don't think it applies in this case. Certainly not a textbook situation for application of that. So let's, I'll just end at that. But I think you've heard all the information and I agree with the folks that say this is a commercial use. The intensity of the use on the site is what we have to worry about based on what's proposed.
Yes, your name?
Linda Goslin. And I'm.
Can you come up?
Sure.
Please, thank you.
I just wanted to say that one of the things that, Linda Goslin. G O U S L I N, Linda.
Linda.
Um, one of the other facilities or whatever you want to call these things that Chad was talking about. He was talking about one of them, they were building frames in the, in the facility. So I would say that is pretty commercial. If they're actually building frames in a building, in one of those bays or whatever you want to call them. But that to me would be commercial. That would not be a service if you're built, actually building things. So that was all. And, and the other thing I did want to say, I know this tractor trailer thing is really getting a little run out, but when we talked about it with Chad before, he said they were all going to come in Route 10. Well, let me tell you something. If you're a tractor trailer driver coming down Route 9 and you get to the roundabout and your GPS says take a right, you're not going to go looking for Route 10 to come in the other end. So all the signs that are on the Keen end of the road that say, no through trucks are, might as well not be there.
Swansea's the same.
Yes, hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board? I always have one final summary. Please. I'll be there very quick. I'm not going to say anything new. But, um, just to get the, the tractor trailer traffic things, as I'm sure you know, those are site plan review, planning board issues. Not really what we're here for tonight. Um, and everyone keeps raising commercial. Again, it's a business district. So I don't see commercial as the, the tipping point there. Um, and then finally, as the chairman of the planning board said, uh, and I, I wasn't aware exactly that this is how Swansea does it, but many other towns do, that, um, some sort of minor site plan or use approval is required for each tenant. So that's where that sort of check and balance comes into play. So I, I think those three things are pretty important as an overall summary. None of them are new, but I think they're important to remember. Thank you. Ann?
Oh, I have a question and it might as well be, I guess, to, to the board. When we, let us say, let's, let's say there were a review and a variance or an exception was required. Does that stay with the, the renter or does it stay with the property? Because in the past, we have, we, we have worked with, um, you know, some facilities like the music people at the fairgrounds and that was going to stay for ten years. It was gonna, you know, the exception to allow them to play music on the weekends really loud was going to be like a ten-year thing. So how, how does that work? If, if each, in a multi-tenant environment where a tenant is granted an exception and they move, let's say they're there eighteen months and they're gone, does that exception stay with that building? Or does it go with them when they leave?
Colonel?
If I may, Mr. Chair, normally the general rule is that the variance runs with the land. So your permission to use a use not permitted, which is what a variance is, would stay with the land or the unit, which is odd because it's. the land or the unit, which is odd because it's, it's not the whole piece of property, it's something trapped. So I find the, the question is a fascinating one and a difficult one if you try to apply it to the individual quartered units. I think you'd have a hard time doing that. You'd have to make it, um, maybe terminable, I imagine, for the duration of the lease.
The duration of the lease.
Because then you don't know who's gonna come in again.
Right.
So, but normally the rule is it runs with the land.
Mike?
Uh, Mike Jasmine, Code Enforcement. You're talking specifically about multi-tenants.
What?
Not, not, not variances, not special exceptions, the multi-tenant process.
Multi-tenants.
The multi-tenant process is the multi-tenant process. It's for that applicant.
Okay.
Okay, so if you do shoe repair and you move out, that doesn't mean the next person can automatically do shoe repair.
Right. I'm just, I'm just trying to-
I hear you.
Conceive, I'm trying to conceive how often it might occur that they can't find enough tenants that meets their regular requirements, and they want to find some more. So, that's-
Okay, each and every tenant's gonna have to come before the town or before the board and be viewed as to what they're doing.
Okay.
Kind of a mini site plan review, if you will.
One last time?
One little thing?
Please, no, that's, and not closing the public hearing. I don't want to do that if anyone wants to-
Victoria Ames, Planning Board. Um, I get confused with these things, so maybe other people are too, but we have a commercial industrial district, right? But we don't have a specific, we don't have a permitted use that is the commercial use, okay? There's a bunch of different kinds of uses that are commercial uses, but we, we don't have something that falls under the umbrella of being a commercial use.
All right. Anyone else before we close the public hearing? Anyone on Zoom popping up, so we will close the public hearing. And we'll move into some deliberations here, some discussion amongst the board. Anyone want to jump on? Thoughts? Ideas?
I'll just arrest the elephant in the room. Everybody keeps talking about tractor trailers and, and the road not being a good road or safe road, or whether it's state-owned or town-owned. I guess it's town-owned, we've already determined that. That's a whole separate issue, has absolutely nothing to do with what we're talking about. However, I want to make sure that it's on the record that we acknowledged the conversation from several people about that same topic. The road certainly could be widened out and trees cut down, and the fallacy that while it's owned by Yale Forest and we can't touch it, that's just not accurate information. But it is what it is. So the road has nothing to do with what we're talking about.
Yeah. Thank you, Brian.
What does that for you guys? Looking at, reviewing the, um, some of the other proposed, well, not proposed uses, it uses that the board looked at, uh, for, you know, for services and these other companies, you know, um, knowing these Pappas Construction, Off 32, there's a lot of things going on over there, you know. Construction, one of those aspects is a horse plowing.
Horse plowing.
You know, they're making soil, I guess it is. So there's a lot of, you know, both of those things are occurring in those properties. But I think there's definitely a case to be made that landscaping and electrical services most likely will be off-site. You know, you're not, you're not gonna, you know, get your landscaping and have a landscaping service and, as a customer, bring it back, you know? So it's implied that it's those two things. I don't know enough about TC Legacy or, or Furlong in terms of their day-to-day, the glass restoration and so forth. That can happen anywhere. You know, it could happen on-site, it could happen in your, you know, in your driveway. So in terms of how these uses are, are being looked at, and the way we've interpreted, both as a board, ZBA, planning and so forth, may not be 100% aligned with, you know, with what this particular use is. So just because these have happened doesn't necessarily mean that it's the way the town's always voted.
Right.
And knowing the zoning board, we've always looked at cases one by one. You know, precedent has some level of, you know, at least influence on how a decision's made, but it's not as, as any year I've ever been on the board or any case we've been part of has been the rule of thumb. You know, it's always been a case-by-case situation, and we look at the relevant information, make a decision based upon that. So, um, best of luck to your decision-making, but I just want us to reference those points from my perspective.
Other members of the board? Your thoughts?
I wanna, I want us to discuss a little bit about what the actual use proposed is here. I mean, we, we've heard arguments that this is a, the use is to provide facilities for others to use the place. And it's my feeling that the use of this place is defined by the people who will actually be engaging in activity on this place, not the, not all-purpose storage units. Their, their use of providing spaces is not the use that's being proposed. What's being proposed is the kinds of businesses that will be using the bays. And I don't know how everybody else feels about that.
First.
Well, I'll jump in.
Please.
I feel that the use, the proposed uses go beyond or exceed what I consider services. I think it's into fabricating, and it's manufacturing, and commercial. That's how it feels to me. It doesn't feel like services. Feels like you're building something, you're making things, you're producing things. Um, you're welding, you've got gases, you've got, you know, you've got three or four people welding things in however many units. That's a lot happening. That's not a service. So in my opinion, I think maybe they, they might need a variance and/or a special exception, but I think it definitely goes beyond services, what I would consider services.
And that really is, I believe, what we're here to determine.
Right. So that's my-
So then I would ask you this question, and I don't have an opinion made yet. Agreeing with your statement, then testimony's been provided that, if I understand it correctly, which I may not, we're making a decision on the property, on the build, whether it's within the use as we defined it in the zoning. Individual users would then have to come in themselves to still get a variance or a special exception if they intend to do something that's outside of whatever it is we provide as guidance, right? So Kenny Plumbing, they're in a multi-use building. They do some retail, but they really don't do retail out of there. We can say they do, but they don't. They, they, they don't. It's, it's over phone, it's over site visits, it's over whatever. And that's a multi-use building. But if they were to leave there and open up Kenny Electric there and put a retail, they'd have to get a, a zoning permit to do that. I'm assuming it's the same for this. If we're talking about, um, Grantingle denying the application and their understanding of use and services, the individuals still have to come here if it's beyond the norm, right?
And the planning board too, as I understand.
And the planning board too.
Yeah, and given that we don't know, and even the applicant had stated they don't know everyone that's gonna be in there, but it could be a broad range of organizations which, you know, at, at least what I'm looking at would fall under services, where some of them, some of them might, might, you know, what you're calling fabrication, and where, you know, you're not really manufacturing anything from raw materials, turning ore into steel into pipe. You're not doing that. But you might be taking a pipe and bending it with, with some tools that you have inside the facility. So I, I am seeing, and I, I see what you're saying, and I can see where, you know, but, but to say, say the entirety of the, of the proposal is, I mean, is, there's quite a lot of what I would think are services in here. So I couldn't, that's the way I'm looking at it. It's both, both retail to some extent, because they're gonna have office spaces, they're gonna be taking phone calls, and, you know, inventory, that sort of thing. There are still services going on.
I also, you go ahead.
I would just say, knowing what I know about somebody proposed uses here, about being electrician, HVAC, plumbing, these are all things that are occurring on-site. You know, there's very, very little fabrication on any of these things. I don't care what kind of plumber you are, you're not sitting there making your bins at the facility and bringing them there. It's all site-by-site basis. It's all based upon what's going on there. I mean, maybe you could see a potential for some of that occurring on-site, but I would imagine very, very little, you know? And, uh, I don't know what else you'd call some of these things. I mean, electrician is not a service. I don't, I mean, you know, what's the difference between, I mean, I guess you can make a differentiation between being an attorney or an accounting firm, where maybe some of the work is actually being done on-site. Um, and then some of that may live in a courtroom, or some of that may live in some other area. But, um, these all seem like services to me, I mean, every single one of them, whether they're-
When I'm, when I'm looking-
That's just my opinion.
I'm, I'm, I'm leaning in, yeah, I'm leaning in that direction, because certainly there could be some businesses that come in there that aren't, aren't appropriate and may need additional, you know, either need to be located somewhere else, but I'm,
Or a buffer.
All, all the examples we have are service-related. I just think about the people that live in my community that, you know, where they're running their, age, their whole business out of their, out of our house, out of the garages. And they've grown to the point where they're in the, in the lawn, and, you know, they, they could fit in a location such as this. Maybe they've grown to that point. You know, how big does a business need to get before it needs its own facility, owns its own property, you know?
American dream.
Using, using a facility like this would be a stepping stone for many businesses, growing businesses.
I just want to point out what I consider a, a problem with the language of the zoning ordinance. And I don't, I don't want to be too nitpicky, and I certainly plan to have people disagree with me here, but I read line F under uses permitted as retail sales, comma, services to imply that retail applies to sales and retail applies to services. And I do so because, uh, the collection of permitted uses under each letter are listed, that are, the things that are listed are related uses, and in other lines on that page, things like private club or lodge, private applies to club, private applies to lodge as well, commercial greenhouse or nursery, commercial applies to greenhouse, commercial applies to nursery. I think the, I think the, um, similar uses are separated by semicolons, not commas. And services is defined differently in our Planner's Dictionary, which what I choose to use is the, the Bible or the dictionary here. And service and retail service are two different things. Retail service implies things that are like restaurants or real estate and insurance, things, things where people come to the site and use the services. Where services in general are any act or results of useful labor which is not in itself produced a tangible commodity. So all the examples given by the developer, um, are services and not retail services, um, according to that definition. So they aren't, in my mind, if you read the zoning ordinance carefully, the general services are not an approved use in the business district. It's retail services which are approved. Now, if somebody were to have a retail use, a retail service that was there, it would not be one of the listed things that the applicant is, is listed in the application. But if they were, if this facility were approved and somebody with a retail service business were to come, it would be covered by the zoning regulations. Just as an aside, I hope the planning board looks at changing the language a little bit here to be, to be sure they're getting what they want here. But if I strictly read the zoning ordinance, I don't see how the types of services applied for fit. However, I do see that the argument could be made that the usage is more properly professional in business offices, which is an approved use. I consider the fact that there's gonna be an office on-site to be part of the, what's going on here, and it's gonna be used by a professional, plumber with an office and storage and, and vehicle space. And I think that that, that fits there, which is an approved use. But I'm more than willing to change my mind if people have counter-arguments.
What you're saying is you believe our ordinance, when it comes down to that section where it says retail, sales, services, that those services were, the word services was intended to be associated with retail?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
That's the way I read it. Now, other people could read it differently. But looking at the construction of the other lines here,
Yeah.
I believe that services is supposed to be attached to retail.
So, James, are you, are you saying that the, like, the examples that Moore provided, plumbing, HVAC, landscaping, electrical, you're saying that they don't, they don't have a retail component?
I'm saying that they don't meet the definition of retail services. So the retail services-
But they're professional services.
They're professional services, right.
In your view?
The, the definition of retail service system that, that were provided by Julius from the Planner's Dictionary says establishments providing services or entertainment as opposed to products to the general public for personal or household use, including eating and drinking places, hotels and motels, finance, real estate and insurance, personal service, motion pictures, amusement and recreation services, health, education and social services, museums and galleries, all of which seem much different from the proposed uses that we've, for this application. So I, I, I'm struggling, because I, I do think that the town wants, I think the town wants services to be allowed.
I think we want, I think we want the availability of getting our plumbing taken care of.
But I don't think the way the zoning ordinance is written, there's any provision for that, except as professional business offices, which is what some of those, um, things like, uh, you know, tending and apples, et cetera, have. That's, it's just, I'm, I'm stuck by being a nitpicker here. So I, I'm, I want to be talked out of it, but that's where I am at this point.
Other folks? I did find it to be heartening, our good news, that the, that proposed users of this, of this facility would have to go through the town. I think there, you know, there's a, there's a lot to be said for sitting down with, with our mics and be able to flesh out things of that sort and make sure that it's, that's helpful to me to know that that's, this is not just a blanket approval of whatever the owner who decides to move in there is gonna be open, because it can get pretty broad. I think the potential here, I, I don't wanna, you know, I don't want to be ridiculous, but it's pretty broad what can go into this place, and what's necessary for that, whatever that might be, to sustain itself there. Products do have to come in somehow, and they have to leave. Manpower is necessary to, to do some of this work if it's, let alone just loading and offloading. So it's intended, it's, it's going to be a active site. I think when a lot of us think about these facilities, they're pretty static, um, because they're storage, right? They're just, oftentimes, nobody touches that storage unit in months and months and months. So I don't think it's apples and apples. think it's apples and apples to what's going on here. And what, what's being proposed is very different than what we had before. I can see the need, from a contractor perspective, of trying to move out of your basement or your garage to that next level, and this, that's a big step, if you're going out...
That's what, that's what this provides.
I, I can see that here, but then again, if it's, you know, you could have someone making, I, I don't want to, I don't want to go to an extreme. Anything can be happening in these things, if, if, potentially. If indeed, but that's where I'm heartened, that we're going to have a chance to reveal that.
Well, and, and we've only got the four examples.
Yeah.
So, I mean, there could be...
Oh, it could be, there's 400 examples.
There could be any number of uses that, that don't require permits.
Mm-hmm.
That fell, that fall in one of the other categories that's already permitted in the business.
I tend to agree with Jay that, that seems like that word services, when it appears, appears in a way that supports, or at least is intended to describe and, and be a part of a retail establishment. It's retail sales, as he said, comma, services. I don't think, it doesn't appear to me either, my interpretation, that services doesn't stand alone, so that, because that's such a broad category. I mean, services, it's everything.
Services is, yeah, indeed, it is everything.
It's very, very, very broad. So I, I do think that the, you know, it's, it's hard for us to figure that out, I know, but I think that's what we're doing here. We're interpreting, and I do agree with Jay's interpretation of the, of, of, of where that word services intends to be, intends to be directed toward, and it's retail. Within, within the context of our, of our ordinance, it appears that way to me. And this goes beyond just traditional retail, I think, the way I think about it. It's commercial.
And I would point out, I would point out that, well, I mean, there could be some component, but some of the businesses that may make use of this space may not have any, any items at all that they need to be stored. There might be other materials that they, you know, that they have there.
Well, I think these are those rabbit holes that we could be talking about.
We, we could talk about it all day, because they may...
I mean, what is the definition of commercial? Well, that has no bearing on this conversation.
Yeah, and I'm not even saying that word.
But retail is commercial. Walmart's commercial, Amazon's commercial, Penny Plumbing's commercial, so let's, the vernacular doesn't fit the crime here.
No, I'm just saying...
But by the same token, in the business world, when you're talking about building things and manufacturing, that's industrial manufacturing. It's different than commercial.
That's not what this is, though.
So if I'm talking business to government, or business to business, I'm going to assume that that is a commercial operation in nature, not geared to a retail situation, because it's not, by pure definition, it's not. Business to business will be building something to sell to a distributor, who's then going to sell to a retail organization...
Right.
...or consumer.
Well, everyone...
But if I go into a mini-storeage and I'm fitting pipes and bending pipes, and I am now servicing to a retail customer, which is somebody that's paying me money to apply that pipe, that's retail. That's retail. I mean, I'm not going to a storefront. The trouble is, is that we have this picture that if I can't walk into a Walmart and give somebody my credit card, then it's not retail. Well, that's just not accurate.
No, because in any of these describes...
The guy that fixes my electricity, he's providing me a professional service, Jay's point, and he's using inventory that he has on hand, or that he's buying from a wholesaler, like an FW Web or whoever, CED, right? But his service and product, to me, is a retail organization. That's a retail sale to the end user, which is the definition of it.
That's what, that's what I'm seeing.
Yeah, I think, I think we're, we're kind of agreeing that it's professional services that are being offered here. Are we?
I, I'm leaning towards professional and retail, yeah, both.
And the question is, how do we interpret the zoning ordinance?
Well, but that it comes down to, maybe somebody wants the rent, and then it's not going to be a question.
And then they have to seek...
They might have to get a variance.
They might have to get a variance. But all the, all the concerns, the, the wetlands, the, the traffic, the impact on the community, all those things will have to be, you know, that's a burden that the planning board would need to be looking at.
Yeah, I mean, I 100% agree with the taxpayers, as, as we are those as well. We're just volunteers here. But that road's a mess. It's been a mess for decades, and they don't have any designs in doing anything about it.
Well, yeah.
But that's above us and beyond us.
Right.
Well, and increased usage typically dictates action.
Supposedly, we would have thought that's all the increased activity on that road when they built the comments.
Yeah, not always, not always, so.
All right.
You guys ready?
You guys ready?
I'm not quite ready. Give me, I need, I need a minute.
Sure, sure.
You want to work on it?
Ethan and Lisa, you can quieten the forums.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to...
No, I still feel the way I feel. I think it goes above and beyond services. I think it's light industrial.
Okay. Glad I asked.
And I respect your opinion.
Well, thank you.
She means she disagrees. Anyone else? Going once? Going twice? All right. Well, showtime.
So we're going to have three choices here, right?
What do you think?
I think we have the choice of granting the appeal, which would deny the package that has been submitted with the word services in it, to the planning board. We can grant the appeal with a modifier, professional services as opposed to services, or Mickey Mouse Club, whatever we decide. Or we deny the appeal, and we let it stand as the zoning board, the planning board has put forth, with the word services as intended. That's how I see it, the three. And I'm actually going to have to teach you.
Okay. Any other comments, or both on the board? Questions with a, within the board? Okay. Anyone comfortable with a motion of some sort?
I'll make one.
Okay.
I'm, I'm going to put forth, I'll, I'll give you the language later, but I'll put forth that we use modified language in place of services.
Sherry?
That we use a modifier. Have the zoning board go, the planning board go from letter F to letter E.
Wait, hold on.
Yeah, from retail service, sales services to professional business offices.
Oh, so you're saying... Okay.
Well, we're only here to decide whether the planning board used their, appropriately the word services, letter F in our zoning, right? And I think what Jay put forth is a solid argument, that instead of services, he's providing, providing the argument that E, the letter E, would be more appropriate, which would be professional and offices.
Professional and business offices.
Professional and business offices.
So that would, if, if this is a question, so that would mean that, that, that services is not the right?
No, well...
That's correct.
Retail services.
Retail services, but you're, but services...
The planning board is what I was getting at. The planning board is the determination of this being services.
Or if we agree that the services is, then services is. I mean, that's really what we've got to decide, is services or not.
Is this, yeah, was their interpretation correct?
Yeah.
And what Brian is saying is, we could decide that services is not correct as an interpretation of what this use is, but we could say the use is, that instead, professional and business offices. We could say that. So in other words, there's a middle ground where we...
And are we saying then that in the...
Support the appeal, but deny the, or, not deny, I'm sorry, support the appeal, but interpret the language of the decision differently?
Are we, are we saying that in, in conducting their professional services, that people who do HVAC and landscaping, et cetera, could use those facilities to conduct their professional services?
That's what we're saying.
Professional businesses, okay.
Point of origin, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, yes.
In order to properly record the motion, is this...
Well, you haven't done the motion.
We haven't done the motion.
I thought you started.
No, 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 no.
We'll be inter...
What I gave was the three options, as I see it.
Yes.
And now we have to decide whether to leave the word services, or remove the word services, or to grant the appeal and say it's just the board overstep.
Or misunderstanding.
So, I mean, maybe, maybe doing a mock vote of who thinks deny, because we have three choices, we have to come up with one, right? I don't know how people are leaning.
I think the, I don't know if we have many choices. The way I understand it is that we have, we have to, we have, it's been, the appeal is on the planning board's...
Use.
Use of the...
Correct.
Of the word services.
Of VBF. Correct. So we either have to grant, deny, or grant and modify.
That's what I was trying to get to.
Yeah, so those are the three categories.
Okay.
And if we ever want to, I would just say, I think a proposal, I'm sorry, a motion should be made, and without...
Before we...
Without a mock.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then either, you know, be that motion, whether it be supported or not, and another motion could be put forth if necessary.
Yeah, hardly do mock stuff. That doesn't even...
Mr. Chair, I think this is inappropriate.
Yeah, we can't. We're closed.
Yeah, sorry.
I was going to point you to something in the ordinance.
I don't think we can take any testimony in a closed hearing. Can't do it.
Thank you, though.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Okay, well, I'll pick one, and then we'll either approve it, deny it, or move forward to the second one. So denying the appeal and make the motion to deny the appeal of Sheri Howard, challenging the planning board's September 14, 2023 decision... And find that the planning board properly classified the proposed use as retail services or services because of the following facts. It's important to note the CBA won't have the issue. Notice the decision and written findings.
So your motion is to, to concur with the, with the planning boards?
Yeah.
Is there a second on that motion, for discussion purposes, anyway?
Do I withdraw and go to the next one?
Well, if you don't get a second, you're going to have to.
Well, I, I don't understand. I, I wasn't following.
Basically, this is saying that the planning board did not overstep, and they used the appropriate V...
Yeah.
Bravo, Fox Trot.
Okay.
Is there a second, or the...
I'll second that.
You'll second that? Okay.
So it's been moved, and seconded. Help me here, feel free to pop in here, that the, that the, that the planning board correctly... Correctly...
Do you want to read it again, Brian?
I make the motion to deny the appeal of Sheri Howard, challenging the boards, the planning board's September 14, 2023 decision, to find that the planning board properly classified the proposed use as retail services, comma, services, comma, end quote, because of the following facts.
So we need to hear the facts, I think.
Well, I think that's for us to decide, and so... And we're going to have to issue a notice of our findings and facts.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor, that the planning board correctly identified services, that this is, what's been proposed is considered a service.
Correct.
Does this sound right? Okay. I think we'll, let's, as opposed to...
Well, I'm not sure that's exactly what it is. We're denying the appeal, but we're not saying the planning board was correct. We're just denying...
Well, the appeal was, the planning board overstepped and used the wrong terminology and the wrong wording.
Right.
So we're sustaining this motion of the three. This one sustains the planning board.
Okay. Understand the motions?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, in favor of that motion, I'm just going to go down one, one-on-one. I'll start with Brian. You, you made the motion, you...
I made the motion, so I have to accept it.
Yeah, okay, so you're, yes. Ann?
Um, I'm, yes.
Okay. Lisa?
No.
Jay?
No.
Uh, and I'm going to vote no.
Okay.
So that, that motion, no.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion fails.
So we'll move on to the second, as that motion was denied.
Okay.
I think this is going to be a better approach. Let me just get my bearings here.
Sure, absolutely. Take your time.
Okay, so here we go. You ready?
Okay.
I will take a second swing at this, and make a motion to grant the appeal of Sheri Howard, challenging the planning board's September 14, 2023 decision, and find that the planning board erred by classifying the proposed use as retail sales, comma, services. Instead, the use should be classified as Roman numerals V, letter Bravo, letter Echo.
What?
Echo.
What?
So VBE.
Do we have a second?
Brian?
Yes.
Just E, or, are you looking at the same thing I'm looking at?
Well, we can only pick one of them.
Okay, can you read it again?
So, okay. I will read it again, yes.
Without the Echo?
Yep. Keeping in mind that we already did letter F, Fox Trot, and was denied.
Point of order from Council Chair?
Yes.
I, I think someone else should make the motion.
I'm not, I'm sharing, but for continuity, I'm not, huh?
Because, because, is it, I'm thinking it's because you're, like, going from one mo, going from yes to no. You're making the motion, you made the motion that we, that the services is okay.
Where the line is down there. Oh, you're not seated.
Here you go. A second, I'll use this language.
Okay.
I make a motion to grant the appeal of Sheri Howard, challenging the planning board's September 14, 2023 decision, and find that the planning board erred by classifying the proposed use as retail sales, comma, services. Instead, the use should be classified as Section 5B and E, which is professional and business services, because that, the evidence we have in front of us indicates that the, there'll be professionals using these offices and spaces to provide services.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded that the planning board did err in determining the proposed use to be services, in a nutshell. Uh, let's see, is it the same order? Brian?
No.
No? Ann?
Yes.
Is anybody here? Lisa?
No.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
No.
No? No?
Jay?
Yes.
Um, I will, I will vote that the planning board did err in, in determining that they, the proposed use was services. So I, I, it is a yes.
A yes.
Yes.
The yes is in front of two no's.
I'm sorry, let me do a recess. Can we do a recess?
Yes.
Quick recess with council, yeah.
Okay, do we need to take a vote on that? No?
I think you can move it.
All right, we'll take a short recess and pick this back up? Is that what's being asked?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But yes, you have that right.
Okay.
Sure. All right. It was determined, uh, that, um, our motion, our second motion, and we're clarifying this, is that the motion was that the planning board erred in determining this as services and really it should be professional and business offices that is, is a more appropriate place. And that the vote that the planning board aired in determining this was a three to two vote. Voting in affirmative was, um, myself, Jay and Ann. And voting in the negative was Brian and Lisa. But it passed three to two that the planning board did err in determining the, this as being a service business. And anyone here who wants to help make sure that I'm stating things correctly, I would appreciate it. Okay, so the vote has been taken. Motion number two is that the vote is three to two that the planning board did err in determining this as being services. This business is being a service, is a service business. Services use. Services use as services, service, a service use. Thank you.
So the other part of that is more appropriate when it's professional-
Professional business offices. Professional and business offices, which is within our ordinance. So the vote was taken that the planning board did err, it was passed three to two. And that's where we are right now. So we're-
Okay.
So here feels firm.
Right.
Yeah, it's right there.
Yes. I think that is it? Any other business that may be required coming before this board? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to return.
Motion to return.
Seconded. It's moved and seconded, all votes in favor, but this indicates, I hope, by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you all.